Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. I've got a roll call of Joe and I here tonight, starting at 6 o'clock. And to keep us all on time, I'm just gonna get started. Couple of things for those in the audience, thank you for coming tonight. But please, no comments or anything, we're just gonna go through, ask our questions. Joe has his questions, I have my questions, I don't know what his are, he doesn't know what mine are, to be very clear. And we'll go from there, okay? Everybody?
Thank you.
Thank you. So how this is gonna go is we're basically gonna ask a bunch of questions. Joe hasn't, we haven't had any conversations, so he'll have questions different than mine, and just go through them. And I'll just say if you want to make an opening statement, you're free to make an opening statement to us if you want.
Oh, I think that's alright, I just wanna say thank you guys so much for the opportunity, for asking me in, and I look forward to having such a great conversation with you guys this evening.
Okay, perfect. So I'll just defer, and you can go first.
So of all of the people that we're talking to tonight, you've been in the village the shortest amount of time. I guess, how do you feel that that brings you a unique experience or a unique view to be able to assist what we've got going here?
Well, that's a very interesting question, and I actually appreciate you bringing it up. I certainly can understand how certain people would feel that that would be a really strong detriment, right? Because you don't know a community quite as well as other people who may have been here longer. But I also think that there are some benefits that go to coming into a community and seeing potentially other errors that other communities have committed. And one of the things that I heard over and over again as I campaigned was that people in the community did want somebody with a slightly different and fresh perspective. But what they told me, when they told me that, they also said, "We want people who know the community as well, so we're not going to vote for everybody who's new who's running." So I think what I heard was the expectation that I would come in and work with the trustees who have been here for a very long time, and respect them, and, you know, hopefully find some common values, while also giving them a perspective of places that I have lived and potentially left for various reasons. So, thank you.
Cool, thanks. Okay, I'm just gonna, I have one thing that I highlighted from here, it says you managed federal grants and managed a multimillion dollar budget in the California Department of Public Health.
I did.
So managing a budget like that, that's actually very impressive. Can you tell me a little bit about that, and what that all entailed?
Sure, so we had three different streams of federal funding, and one stream of grant state funding. So we had state dollars that came in, and then we had public health preparedness one, public health preparedness two, and a health services administration grant. And the total amount on that was $20 million. And I came in as administrative assistant, and I had a mentor who helped guide me. And as she left, I was actually put in charge of taking care of those and applying to renew our grant funding as the administrator in our department changed. And so it was a great amount of responsibility, and then we would take that money, and we were a home-ruled state, which means that local governments have a lot of power. And so some of that money went to them to incentivize their preparedness activities, and we would write guidance for them on what activities we would like them to conduct. Of course, you can't tell them, so you can only recommend, but you can recommend in the strongest ways with your purse string attached. And so then we would, of course, compile the information that they sent to us, make sure that it met the criteria sent to us by the feds, who of course also only recommended the activities that we conducted, and made sure that we met all the metrics and sent it back, vote reports and stuff like that, so.
Okay, thank you.
I see one of the things you've mentioned in here is that you're a Six Sigma Black Belt.
Yep.
Can you expand on that, and?
Well, it means that I have awesome karate skills.
Yeah, that is always the first thought every time you read this.
Sorry, I interrupted you.
No, no, I guess just beyond that, do you see that playing into what the board does?
So Six Sigma is a process improvement standard, right? So you have define your issue, you measure the current state, and then you analyze what you're going to do, and then you control. And so really how it got started was in manufacturing, because you don't want a lot of variation in a process for manufacturing, because it starts to cost you money as you get things back. So it's actually been adopted by many different types of organizations, and in one of my quality improvement attitude, or one of my quality improvement areas, when I worked at Affinity Health Solutions, which was bought by Stanford University, that was one of the areas that we focused on, so decreasing the variation in patient care. And so, of course, that's a very important goal, is making sure that patients don't come in and, you know, have somebody scream at them, or whatever. And so it's a pretty rigorous model for change. So you enter, you define your problem, and sometimes the most interesting thing that I think you guys might be interested is, you figure out what your return on investment, what your ROI is going to be. And sometimes you have this big sexy project that you're all excited to do, right? You really discover that sometimes those big sexy projects are not the ones that are gonna give you the biggest return on investment. And also, the other thing that it really emphasizes is often Six Sigma Black Belts are not necessarily employed by the organization that they're going in and incentivizing change in. So what you are is a consultant trying to change an organization, and that's actually a potentially very difficult situation to be in, because again, right, we just kind of talked about, you know, somebody who's new to an organization, doesn't fully understand it. And what it tells you is you have to get leadership buy-in from the top. But it also says, you have to really talk with the people who the change is going to impact, because if you don't do that, they can completely sabotage whatever change you're trying to make. And so I think there are some really key points that would be valuable to you guys on the Village Board. An approach to change, making sure that you guys are okay with things, but then also really making sure that we as a community buy into that, right? Variation in the process is pretty important for you guys. We need to make sure that everybody's getting an equal process, because if they don't, they can get kind of upset and kind of nasty, and nobody wants that, we want to protect our community. So I think that could potentially be very valuable to you guys.
Thank you.
Okay. So under the second question, why are you interested in becoming a trustee? You answered, "I'm interested in becoming a trustee because I believe I can help make our community stronger." And you talked about running for office for 2019, and then our country as a whole is experiencing a significant distrust of institutions, and I have unfortunately seen that in many of my fellow community members. Can you expound on that a little bit? And just, what do you think caused this, and?
Sure.
What can you do to fix it?
So, sure, so this is sort of a big question with a lot to unpack. But we work as the World Wisconsin Health Cooperative in a rural area, and, you know, the community and country being divided is really something that we struggle with quite a lot. And as somebody who does immunization promotion, there's been a lot of talk in circles surrounding immunizations, that science as itself has been really proven to be distrustful. Recommendations from the Centers for Disease Control, or the FDA, are seen as somehow corrupt and, you know, full of conspiracy theories. And so I actually deal with that on a day-to-day basis, that, you know, we have people who may find echo chambers online, or, you know, just find, have some sort of sense of community, and they find that they distrust people who are in power. And I have seen some of that here in our community, and it's upsetting to me. And I have tried to do my very best as I can to address that head-on, and try to get people to give you the benefit of the doubt when it's very appropriate. And I think that as we come together and look and examine other points of view, we can really bring that together. So I went to an Association of Associations, the Wisconsin Partners Training, on how to build stronger communities. And what they looked at, and it's sort of reflected what I see in my work, where a trusted physician is somebody who can go in and make that strong recommendation to immunize, where no one else can do that, right? Because they're the person with that relationship. And what the Wisconsin Partners reminded me is that those relationships really matter, and that trusted source of information really matters. So you might be a trusted source to certain people within the village, because you have that great relationship with them. And I think I might also be a trusted source of information, because I have a relationship with people. And I think that if we came together and worked to build our community by finding common values, which was something really strongly identified, we can really bring our community together.
Okay, thank you.
So this one's probably a little interesting. Is there an action that you've seen taken by the Village Board in the past that you would like to do over, if given the chance?
Well...
Doesn't necessarily mean it's a bad outcome, or whatever, just, you know?
So, nothing specifically springs to mind, because here's what I really believe, is I don't really believe in going backwards. I don't believe in overturning people's decisions that they've made based on information that's provided to them. And so instead, I think it's better to look at what the whole picture is today, right? So what are we looking for, how can we do it better? And so the one thing that I think I would be potentially vocal on is taking a holistic view of what our code is, and thinking about what are we looking for, what's appropriate for 2019, and how do we go forward.
Okay, thank you. So for those who may not know, can you share when you moved to Wannakee, and why you chose Wannakee?
Sure. So I moved to Wannakee in 2015, June 2015, so we just passed our fourth year here. And like most of the people that I've talked to, we moved here because we saw a good community. And one of the things that I really balanced with my husband, who's here, is we both liked kind of a smaller town, and, you know, getting out of big cities, we'd lived there, and, you know, it's really easy to be anonymous, and there are some actually really negative health consequences associated with that. And that's been something that's been very informative to me, as public health has become sort of more expansive in how they address the health outcomes of our dwelling environment. And so we were really looking for a place that had connection. And Peter, my husband, works at St. Vincent de Paul, he knew the people at St. John's, and when I told him about the house that we saw for sale that worked for us, he said, "I know that neighborhood, and how can you not want to move to somewhere that, you know, you know that?" So...
Okay, thank you.
Couple of different places I can go here. What do you see as Wannakee's biggest strength?
I think the community and the people, absolutely. I mean, what I see with people is they're very committed. I volunteered at Wannafest this past weekend, and there was a lot of people pulling together to make the community strong. I constantly run into really well-educated people, and I think that's fantastic, and they are committed to our community. And I think that's really, really fantastic, and I'm constantly surprised by how much people know. I mean, they are coming up to me, they talk to me, they say, "Hey, what do you think about this, do you know about that?" And I think it's so fantastic that people are aware, and they do know what's going on. And I think that that's our biggest asset and value. If you don't have people who are committed and invested, your community's gonna die.
Thank you. Sorry.
What's up?
He's buzzing me. Okay, you mentioned that you ran in 2019 for the trustee position. You obviously worked hard and put in time, but just came up a little short.
Yep.
And now you're here today.
Yep.
Do you believe it's important that the public is not misled by any government official?
Yes.
Okay.
That was... Short and concise.
Yes or no?
And I guess I would also add that I think it's really important for us to give people the benefit of the doubt. So the public should not be misled, and we should also give each other the benefit of the doubt.
Couple of different ways I could word this, I guess. So this particular appointment is roughly 21 months. When that comes to an end, do you foresee, and I know it, obviously, very, very early, would you be inclined to run for another term, or turn the seat over to whoever else may be running? And sort of as a follow-up to that, how do you feel about things like term limits that, you know, obviously we don't have here at this point?
Sure, that's a great question. Actually, as part of my campaign, I did say that I believe in term limits. I'm not sure about one term, because 21 months is pretty short, and I would say I'm a little uncomfortable with the concept of turning a seat over to somebody. I think that anyone who feels that they have something to say should absolutely step up and run. Running is a fantastic way to get to know your community. I got out, I met people at their doors, I was so shocked by the warmth and passion that people have. So, I mean, and I got to see a lot of Wannakee kind of on-the-ground walking in a way that maybe I wouldn't just, you know, out of my normal way. So I think that anyone who wants to should definitely get up and run, and I'm perfectly delighted to have a good run for my money, should it come to that.
Cool.
Okay, I'll let you know something, though, 21 months, things go by really fast.
Of course it does.
It seems for everybody else that it's moving really slowly, but it really does go fast to get through that 21 months, so. So maybe the little follow-up to my last question, and these are just things that you stated on Facebook, that I just want you to give some clarification to, for me. Because of their public, sorry, because of their power, public officials can't do a lot of things ethically. As a private citizen, I don't have those concerns. After the election, in some ways it is far, far easier for me to enact change by being an outsider, I can say and do far more than if I were bound by the ethics of the office. Tell me what those mean.
So, can I ask you, you stated to me one time that you're not on Facebook.
That's correct.
Okay. So the first part is, there are some things that certainly relating to how one interacts with Facebook, and I certainly understand your concerns. Certainly, there are and have been court cases about how a public official conducts themselves on Facebook. You have to accept every friend request, you cannot mute or delete comments, and so certainly there are opportunities that you have ethics to state or not state for people. And so certainly, sometimes it is very challenging to know what that line is. And certainly, I did feel at that particular moment that perhaps Wannakee was not ready to embrace me as a trustee. I had lost a seat by 66 votes, was a close election, and certainly the person who had stated that was perhaps a little bit more angry than I am today.
On a more fun note, I believe in here it says that you went through the Emergency Services Citizens Academy.
Yes, it was really great. It was a, I mean, such a fantastic opportunity for people in our community to get to know how things work. I was really grateful to get to know and understand a little bit more about the commitment that our volunteer firefighters make, and the needs that they are anticipating over the next few years. Fire truck is a big, big item, they were definitely telling us about some of that stuff. And also really get to build some of those relationships with people within our services, so.
If I can follow up just a little bit, what was your favorite part of that?
Definitely driving the police car.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And you didn't get tased.
I did not, you know, as you know, I have a chronic health condition, and it was not recommended at that point.
I'm not sure I recommended it to anybody.
Well, you got the gold button.
I didn't.
You've gotta go back and get your gold button.
There's a gold button?
Yes.
Oh, well, we'll have to take care of that.
I didn't know tasing would come into any part of this interview, so. Kind of scary, I guess, to bring that up, so. Do you see any issues with working any of the board members for yourself?
So I don't. Certainly, I can understand why you would ask that, and, I mean, I have my own personal anxiety about being the new girl on the board. But, you know, my work with coalitions, I think, has really given me a very unique and positive perspective on the fact that you really have to work with all comers, and you have to find those common values. And I was sort of thinking about that as I was preparing for today, and I anticipated that question would come up. And so I was thinking about this example, an experience that I had with a woman, we had come together, formed an advocacy group, I was kind of tapped, and I was, you know, flattered, and I kind of came in with my own mind of what we might need to accomplish in this instance. And it became very apparent that we kind of had different points of view on what we might accomplish and how we might accomplish it. I think we had the common value of we wanted to accomplish something, sort of like here, we want a strong community. And then we have people who, you know, might come at it from slightly different perspectives, and this woman and I definitely came at it from different perspectives. She wanted to do kind of grassroots, I wanted to do some capital education, and she wasn't up north, and I'm here, so obviously there were some distance issues that came in. And after one particularly difficult phone call, where we were kind of really oppositional and, you know, trying to hash it out, and, you know, I don't think either of us really felt heard at that instance, I found myself kind of labeling her, right? I was, oh gosh, you know, she's just kind of difficult, and she's not really listening to me, and you can kind of see where I'm going here. And so I found myself going to our leadership person, and she's really great, because she doesn't put up with any of that crap, to be really bluntly. She kind of said, "Hey, Jan, let's do, let's do a reality check. What are you, what are you really talking about here? You didn't feel heard, do you think maybe she didn't feel heard in this instance?" And I said, "Yeah, that's probably true." She said, "You know, you're kind of labeling her. What are, what are you trying to accomplish? Do you think that maybe if you tried it her way, you might be able to get there?" And so we did. We ended up going with her method, and it's been pretty successful, to be honest. We've seen some incremental change, and that's been really positive. And so I'm also reminded by a conversation that I had at Wannafest, where one of the men was waxing poetic about politics, and he was, he kind of told me about his perspective on Bill Clinton, which I have to preface for him, he made it very clear. I'm pro-life first, so I didn't support Clinton at the time. But I look back at him, and I see somebody who did some stuff that people didn't like in his first term. So we sent him a wave of Republicans. And what did he do? He reached across the aisle, worked with them, and created a balanced budget. And he listened to what the voters had to say, and in this instance, if I can aspire to be pro-Clinton or not, maybe, the voters have already spoken, they have given you the board as it makes up, and I clearly need to work with them.
In an earlier comment, you talked a little bit about the village code. Are there certain pieces that you think are more in need of attention at this point than others?
Yes, yes. I think that there are definitely some areas where we, as a village board, would need to review and look at what we are asking for. And that's actually really informed by the mentorship program that I have started with the Incremental Development Alliance, and John Adams, Johnny Anderson. He's been really great in talking to me and helping me understand that when you are creating a situation and asking for development, what the little guys are going to look for is what's called development by right. So things that, so they're looking for a code that asks for certain things, and gives them some flexibility, and is not going to require a lot of back-and-forth with the village board or anyone else. So ideally for them, they're looking for that, you know, startup-ready, they can break, you know, pull the permit from Kevin, break ground immediately, and reduce those holding costs as much as possible. And I'm not sure right now that our village code actually will incentivize and create the situation where those incremental developers can come in and make and fill changes that I think we all want to see, and that would feel very comfortable to the village, but maybe are not as allowable through our code.
Cool, thanks.
Okay. So one of the, during the election, I wasn't, I wasn't able to be present for one of the candidate debates that we had. And you inferred that, or stated that I had interviewed you for a committee position, and it made you feel uncomfortable.
Mm-hmm.
You feel it'll be uncomfortable for you to work with me in the future? And second, I would tell you that we didn't have an interview for a committee position. It was an email that you asked me about it after talking about a meeting, that I sent back to you stating what the process was to become onto a committee member. And my question is, I can overcome anything. I feel I'm open and approachable for people. I want to know if you feel that I'm open and approachable for people? Because the board members, I want them to always feel comfortable to come to me if they have something they disagree with, agree with, or if they have an idea that's off the wall, or if they have one that's, hey, we need to work on this. I want to make sure that everybody's approachable to me. So if you can address that.
Certainly. I mean, I think that perhaps our communication lines got a bit crossed, and again, unfortunately not being present, I think that that is an opportunity where things were not quite stated as correctly as possible. But I would only possibly reference to you the fact that even after this conversation occurred, I routinely emailed you and expressed concern, and have never allowed that to be a barrier in the past. And once again, I would say that I have never had an issue working with anyone, and that, you know, I would certainly reach across the aisle and try to work with you as much as possible.
All right, thanks. Last question, Joe.
Last question?
Well?
Yeah. What are your thoughts on TIF?
Ooh, I wondered if that was gonna come up.
We have several minutes, we don't have that many minutes to go, so...
Yeah.
So, like I said, this has been an interesting area of evolution for me. One of the challenges that I see with TIF, and when I look at the law, it says that what we're really trying to do is incentivize development that would not otherwise happen, right? It's the BUT4 test. But also, when I read the instructions from the Department of Revenue, it also said, it's kind of like, it's supposed to be this accelerator, right? Like, you're supposed to try it with a project, and if it's successful, then maybe you try and take your foot off the gas a little bit, and you try to not use that all the time. And so I guess for me, what my policy on TIF would tend to be, I would hope that we would discuss this as a board and come up with an overarching policy, but what I would use, in the instances that I would use TIF, is something that where development would not otherwise occur, and we have not seen such development in the village at this time. And so I really feel like that sticks to the BUT4 test within the law, and really helps with the spirit of what people are being seen. And so that's really, what I would look for is really novel, interesting projects that we're not seeing at any other instance, and make sure that we are being as fiscally responsible as possible.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. So our time is up, but I did fail to say one thing, so I'm gonna share, just so everybody in the crowd knows. Thank you. So, our time is up, but I did fail to say one thing, so I'm going to share, just so everybody in the crowd knows as well. So, what's happening is Joe has his questions, I have my questions. We aren't going to have any discussion. I will be making the recommendation to the board next week. I'm sorry, yeah, next week, Monday. And all the candidates are going to be, well, you should be there for us when we go through that, because the board actually votes you in. It's not just me, I'm just making the recommendation, then they would actually make the decision.
Okay.
Fair enough. Any closing comments you'd like to make, quick?
Just thank you guys so much for your time.
Okay, great. Thank you. Come on in, Nyla. We're, we're pretty close on time. We're doing all right. So, Nyla, as I commented to everyone, the process is going to be, Joe and I are going to be alternating questions. We haven't seen each other's questions.
Okay.
They may be different from what we just asked previous candidate. Just answer them as you wish. We have a half hour to get through everything. Once we're done, I'll be taking and, and taking all the answers. Joe's questions are his questions, mine are mine. And I'll be making a recommendation to the village board next week.
Okay.
At our meeting, for who that is, and please make sure you're available to be there if. I would recommend being there, is what I would say. So, okay. Do you want me to go first this time?
Either.
You went first last time, so I'll, I'll take this one. In, in your response to the writings, it says, "I'm interested in this position because I want to represent everyone who lives in the village. This means citizens at all income levels." Are you, are you, can you elaborate on that? And are you inferring that the current board isn't listening to all?
No, I'm not inferring anything, but I'm thinking about those people who cannot attend meetings because of jobs. Some people are working two jobs. Some people are, are working very low-income jobs, service workers in restaurants, and they really don't have time to attend meetings. And I, I think that the board tries very hard to see all perspectives, but until you've actually been there yourself, or until you're out and about with people in, in those scenarios, it's very hard to have a, a complete understanding. Even if you walk in their shoes, you don't have their perspective.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll start with the, basically the same question from the last one. A little bit of a twist. Of the people that we're talking to tonight, you've lived in the village the longest, almost forty-two years. How do you see that impacting your views and how you'd handle things on the board?
I think it gives me a very good background. I've worked on, in forty-one years, I've worked on nine different village committees under five different village board presidents. I have the history of many, many issues. I, I know the village very well. I've seen a lot happen. I, I know the people, and I feel that I have a lot to offer because I have been here this, this long.
Yeah, thank you. So, we're going to kind of run together with some of these things, so hopefully it won't overlap too much. So, the following committees you've been on: sidewalks, parks, personnel, board of appeals, police, public works, and the Wanaki Housing Task Force. I also served on a committee and made all decisions to build in addition to the Wanaki Area High School. I commend you for all your willingness to serve in the community first and foremost. What, what do you believe is the most important thing that the village board needs to address in the short term?
I think it's not only a village issue, I think it's a national issue, which is communication. Chris, you do a wonderful job having listening sessions, and I enjoy going to those. It's always full of information and, and it's open conversation. Whereas when we come to a meeting, we're limited in public comments, and many, most of the time you can't respond. That's why I find listening sessions so wonderful. So, I would like to see, see that expanded, and perhaps for village trustees to take turns going to other village functions such as Wanaboom, Wanafest, events at the school, if they would let you do it. So, you could set up a table and be available for people who may not be available otherwise because they've run into the schools for conferences, and they may not have contact with the village otherwise. So, I think the, a big issue, and it's going to be a big issue for a long time, is communication.
Okay.
And I'd be willing to go and set up a booth and, or a chair and a couch or whatever and, and sit down and talk with people. One of the things that I've seen recently is that tax assessments are out. You know, try to get ahead of that a little bit and say, hey, you know, this is coming, this is what it may look like, and this is what it means. I'd need to have someone explain it completely to me, but it would be beneficial for people to have that understanding.
Agreed. I like that. I can tell you that at Wanaboom, I can't set up a booth. I don't sit down the whole day. I'm gone.
I realize that, but there's, there's other trustees.
I, I do like your idea. Go ahead.
I guess to kind of play off of that, what do you see as Wanaki's biggest strength?
Wanaki's biggest strength is its people. We work together, play together, take care of each other's needs, and that is a wonderful feeling to feel secure in that your neighbors are going to be there for you.
Okay. But I'm going to vary it a little bit here. Why do you believe Wanaki is consistently related, rated a top place to raise a family in the state of Wisconsin? Other than the people. You see, of the people, what other things do you think?
Education is a big one.
Okay.
We have a top-ranking school. We have a wonderful park system. We have a, a board who is, is working with the schools to watch growth in the village, to also, you know, alleviate the problems in the school that could be caused by huge growth really fast. That's why it's been monitored and, and worked with the school. We, we draw excellent teachers. There are many, many things. The list just goes on and on.
Can I do a follow-up?
Absolutely.
So, with that list you gave, which was a great list, is there anything missing that our community needs to have?
Well, the, the village is going to have a meeting in August to, to start evaluating whether to have a pool program or have a pool in Wanaki. That's not something I know. It won't be known until, there's a lot of work done on a project like that to see if it's feasible or not, and hopefully, you know, if it went to referendum, you know, it may or may not pass, but I feel that that would be a great thing for the, the citizens, all citizens, all ages.
Sorry, I have to ask one more question to that. Do you believe it should go to referendum?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
Still my questions. Kidding. Let's see here. So, another one of the questions that I previously asked, this is basically a twenty-one-month appointment. When you get to the end of that twenty-one months, do you foresee yourself, you know, leaving the seat for whoever may be running? Or running again, or, you know?
That would depend on many things. One, how it goes, how, how well I feel I do, how well other people feel I do. Family circumstances, they can change really, really fast. You know, my circumstances, who knows? I could fall and do something, you know, you just, you can't make any promise. That's not a yes or no question. There's a lot of circumstances involved.
Yeah, there are. Follow-up? In, in light of that, and, you know, some people have been on the board for a long time, well, at least previous to our current board. Do you have any thoughts on term limits or any of that sort of thing as far as how it would apply to government?
Well, I realize the village does not have term limits. Personally, I would not want to do, be on a board for fifteen, twenty years because I would want there to be a changeover, hopefully with new ideas. And that's kind of where I am with all levels of government. I would like to see term limits, so.
Okay, so you, I can tell you that I already know this because you stated it to me, and I've already written it to you as you stated in this letter. April sixteenth this year, you said you did your homework, I said, sorry, to you, you did your homework and were always willing to ask tough questions. And former President Lovemeyer stated that you were the voice of the people. Why would you say people think that of you? Put it in your words.
Why do I think people think that of me? Because I've heard many people tell me that. Because, because I've always been out there. Probably one of my biggest flaws, everyone knows who I am who reads the paper. I've written many letters over the years. People know my views, which is one of my biggest assets or one of my biggest failures, depending on how you look at it. And I feel that I am a voice of the people.
Great.
It's that easy.
Thank you.
Is there an action that's been taken by the village board in the past that you would do over if given the chance?
That the board has taken? If I could do it over?
Yep.
I can't think of anything right off. I can tell you that some things that I have thought in the past that, that I questioned that the board did, that as I learned, gained more knowledge, and I learn, I realized that I probably did not have enough information, and I'm still learning. So, I've learned that a lot of things have to do with individual cases. So, I think, you know, I will, I cannot judge, for one thing, I never have all the information that the board has when they make a decision.
Okay. Good. Thanks. So, this is going to be kind of a yes or no.
Okay.
Do you believe it's important that the, that the village, or any government official, not mislead the public?
Yes.
Do you think this current board has misled the public in any ways? Or any passports?
Pardon, could you repeat that part of the question?
Do you believe this board or any passports have misled the public in Wanaki?
I don't think you have misled the public. I, I feel that with issues, if you've, okay, in the, I don't know how to explain it. In the past, there have been situations where information wasn't out there as good as it is now, and that's been worked on, and I give the village staff a lot of recognition for that. So, I think it, it's been a matter of growing and being more transparent. And so, in that way, I think sometimes we didn't have all the citizens, or we didn't have all the information that I would have liked to have had, but I can see where you've made strides on correcting that.
Okay. Thank you.
Kind of in the same vein, one of the things you said was, there were times when you felt you didn't have enough information about whatever it might have been. Do you have any ideas or thoughts on how we can improve that going forward?
I feel that a lot of that has been improved through the way that the minutes are going out and the agendas and the information that's out there, that's, it's a, it's a very good change.
Okay. With the makeup of our court board, do you see any issues working with any of them or having any, any apprehensions?
No. I've known Phil three years. Aaron, I find very refreshing. I've worked with you. I don't know Joe well, but I enjoy working with him. Dr. Random, my gosh, I did childcare for him in San Diego for years. And Gary, I've worked on committees with him. Have I missed anyone?
I think that's everybody. That's six. Go ahead.
This is almost kind of a, of course, but, I don't know, have you, have you ever actually been through the emergency services citizens academy?
No, I have not.
Okay. But I know you've got a lot of engagement in everything with the EMS and that sort of thing. Are there places that you would see that we could improve in the village in relation to those kinds of services, police, fire, EMS?
I guess I would like to go through, I was just thinking about that two weeks ago, that I should go through a citizens academy because I've never done that. I think it would be very eye-opening, and before I could really say much about that, I guess that would be something I would like to do.
So, most people wouldn't notice, but generally at every meeting, I have this particular pen with me. It's a picture of my son on the pen when he was little. And the decisions that, so you do daycare. I know that. And the decisions that I make, I generally look at our youth and what's happening in our community and making sure they have a great environment. The pool discussion has come up. You just brought it up, too. The process that we're undergoing right now, do you have any questions about that, or do you have any comments about how we're going about it?
I think it's a great start to have the meeting that you're having in August. It'll be a good kickoff to determine what, what the general public wants, and it'll give you a direction to go from there.
Is there a particular service type of business, whatever, that is not readily available in the village currently that you think should be here?
Well, my husband and I, every time we go out to eat, other than Wanaki, we would really like to see a family restaurant. We, it looks like we may be getting a, a couple grocery stores. I feel that Piggly Wiggly does a good job, but an addition of the grocery stores will be wonderful. I think we're filling in a lot of spaces that were open for a long time.
So, one of the, I think, so one of the challenges always for any new board member, existing board member, is going to be the pressures that come with the position, having to make decisions that people aren't going to be happy with you in regards to. You can't make everyone happy in government. This is not going to happen. How will you deal with that?
The way I've dealt with it on committees. You know, you make the decision, you might think about it a couple of times afterwards, and you go on. That may sound coarse or harsh, but it's what you have to do. You, you can't dwell on it.
I don't think I really got anything else.
Your turn?
I think so.
Okay. So, with your experiences on the different committees, I'm just going to ask you a couple of questions in regards to those. Public works, parks, I don't think you're on finance.
No, I've never been on finance.
One thing that's been approached is that we don't have citizen members on our finance committee. Any comments in regard, regards to that?
I feel that checks and balances are a big issue in anything you do, whether it's a small organization, a club, or government. And I feel that having citizen members on the finance committee would be a great thing. For one thing, you never know when things are going to change, and that would just be an ongoing situation that would be helpful, not, you know, only now, but also perhaps down the line even more.
Okay. So, you would be in favor of having a discussion amongst the board to reinstate having some citizens on that?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
We do have one more.
Go ahead.
What's your view on TIF?
Most people here know my view on TIF, but it's not about my view. What it's about, because TIF is a very specific thing, there's a specific proposal for every project. So, you have to look at the proposal. I'd have to read the proposal, look at it in depth. I'd probably have to get some hand-meup from Chris or whoever he tells me to talk to, so I could better understand it because I'm, you know, I, I'd be new and I wouldn't know what was going on. I'd digest it the best I could and come up with the best scenario that I could. That's one of those areas that I have come to realize that I was probably very harsh over the years, that I feel that it's, there are places for TIF proposals. Especially after I'm doing research on my own and learning, and also Housing Task Force, that TIF, at the end of a TIF, the funds can be used instead of closing the TIF for, I believe, two years, that it could be put toward some worker housing. So, there, there's a lot of things that I've learned along the way that I did not note before.
I think everybody experiences that when they run for village board, village president, those things that you'll have people come up to you and ask you questions about things that there's no way you're never going to know those things, but you're kind of expected to know. So, you just go out and find as much information as you can, like you just said, research it, ask village staff. That's going to be an important thing for whoever's named or whoever runs in the future for this village board. That staff is very important in, in getting your day-to-day things done here. So, I'm, I'm completed with, with my questions as well. Do you have any comments you'd like to make outside?
I would just like to thank you for bringing this to. I would just like to thank you for bringing this to an interview process with the applications first. I do appreciate that.
Great, I did have one more question for you.
Yes.
I hate to do this to you, but this is the hardest question that any of the people are going to get tonight.
Okay.
Okay? And I just, I have to put it out there. So, you sent me an email. We've had many conversations. And one, this was after the election. And it says, "Since there's a board opening due to Susan Springman's recent resignation, it seems that we are rational and fair to appoint the position to the person from the ballot in the spring election with the largest number of votes." That person is also interviewing for this. Is that still your belief?
It is.
You are now trying to have that position as well, so I'm, I know that's a hard question. I said that's going to be the hardest question.
No, it's not a hard question, Chris, at all, because you know me and must tell you the way it is. I feel Ann would be a good person for the position. I feel that, in my opinion, she would be the best person for the position. But in the event that she doesn't get it, I would like to have it because I have experience. I have put 41 years into this village.
Thank you. Thank you, that's great. I appreciate you coming in and appreciate you applying for this and all the work that you've done for the village.
You can't say I'm not honest.
Never have. Thank you. All right, so this gives me my chance to get some water. Keith, do you just want to pause for a few minutes? We have about nine minutes. Hello. No worries. No worries, we'll get started. So, I told all the other candidates to this, so what's happening tonight is Joe and I have questions. He's got his questions, I've got my questions. We haven't discussed them ahead of time. And then after this, I'll be making it, basically, I'm going to be going through everything that we gather, from this interview, from things that you've put in, all that. And then I'll be making a recommendation to the village board at next Monday's meeting. So, they will make the decision ultimately as the vote, but I'll be making the recommendation. Okay? Sound good?
Sounds good.
You can go first this time.
Okay. First of all, it says here that you've been resident of Wannakee for about 11 years. Where were you prior to that and how do you see the time that you've spent here mixing into the, into the board?
Okay, sure. So, I went to school at UW Madison, graduated, lived in Madison around Odana and served on the Board of Public Works for the City of Madison while I was there. And then moved to Middleton, kind of for the schools, I guess, and lived in Middleton for five years. And then my husband, his office moved further into Sun Prairie, so he was driving really far. So, this was a good area for him and us, and so we moved here and, yeah, happy to be here, serving on the Utility Commission now here and Meadowbrook Finance, I think, on the board.
You bet.
Wannakee Rotary, I'm trying to think what else, Library Strategic Planning Commission I was on too.
Excellent.
Yeah, happy to be here, love of the village.
I'm happy to hear you love the village. And if you didn't love the village, I wouldn't want you to apply for this position. But second, or I'll just do a follow-up to that then. So, the different committees and commissions that you've been serving on, what's been some of the challenges that you've faced with those that you thought, this is a hard thing that we've got to deal with?
Well, on the Finance Committee for Meadowbrook, it's just, you know, finding the projects that really need the money and saving for future problems. And everyone, you know, has their own interests and things that they really think are important and then, I don't know, just keeping that whole balance in line financially, I think, is difficult to keep everybody happy on that commission. And then Utility Commission, I think he, you know, he stood on that with me and he just said how we haven't raised rates in, what, nine years on the electric because they just are efficient and trying to, so, yeah. I don't know, I think keeping all the good public services and all the good infrastructure and the bike paths and the, you know, all the Main Street improvements and then still, you know, being financially responsible with taxpayer money as well, it's important.
Okay, thanks.
What do you see as Wannakee's biggest strength?
Probably the schools, yeah. And I think the parks are really good too. And I think they're improving the bike paths and, you know, the crossings. Yeah, I'd say those are the good strengths. And a good community hometown, safe place to live. I'd say too, you know, your kids run around, you're not really worried about them and
Have you noticed any negatives in the community since you've been here?
No. I love the new library. I think like, everything that I think, like, oh, I wish there was a crossing, you know, on 113 and boom, there it is with the flashing lights and I, you know, I'm really happy to get the new library. Just things that I've hoped for have seemed to come. And even like the improved bike paths and access, I think that's important too. And that's coming along as well.
Is there an action that has been taken by the village, either the board or whoever, in the past that you'd like to redo if given the chance?
I don't know, I can't, I can't think of any, I mean.
So, we've done well.
Yeah, I guess. I mean, I haven't been like following every meeting that you're doing. I mean, it's kind of like, I don't know.
I would say that goes back to all the planners and all the different village boards from a long time ago. We've just kind of been keeping a good community going. So, in your, why you're interested in this position, you stated this, the village is a great place to live and I would like to keep it moving in the right direction. So, you said the right direction. What do you mean by that?
Kind of like a good place to raise your family, kind of like I was saying, like good schools, you know, good parks, good, you know, safe, I don't know, community. I mean, that's why I moved here and I really like it and I think it still is and it's growing really fast. And I think, you know, part of that, you know, you just have to really, I don't know, manage the growth or really kind of, like you said, and then there's plans in place to help with that and help guide the, you know, the board.
So, you've got experience as a civil engineer, quite a bit of it actually. What's your view of the current state of the roads in the village and what would you like to change, if anything?
You know, I think that they, you know, have a plan for replacing the roads and what roads need replaced. I think one of the things that we, like you said, struggles in the Utility Commission is just that the sanitary sewer charges are getting really expensive because MMSD has to treat all that water and it's just exponentially getting out of control. So, we at the utility are trying to figure out, how can we replace our utilities even if the road isn't being replaced or how can we combine that with road replacements to save money? You know, I don't need to get into the details of that, but stormwater gets in the sanitary sewer various ways.
Sure.
And then we have to pay for treatment of that when we don't need to, if it doesn't ever get in there.
So, one of the areas that we've been addressing is affordable housing. We've been going through the Housing Task Force. We're going to have some new developments that are coming online in the next several years. Any ideas or thoughts on how you're going to handle that particular topic if chosen to be on the board?
I guess I would review that, so you, you're getting or almost have a document that's going to guide you on decision-making on that. So, I think I would utilize that document and, you know, try to go by what the community wants for that.
So, let me follow up to that if that's okay, babe? As far as our growth goes then, do you see that we've had a managed growth? Do you believe we've been growing too slowly, too quickly on that front?
It seems like we're growing quickly. I mean, when you look around at the housing and stuff. Yeah, I mean, I haven't looked at the land use plans and I haven't seen like, I think you're limited by how much you can grow to per Dane County ordinances, but.
Okay. Okay, I'm just trying to get a feel for if you're more pro-growth or anti-growth?
I'm kind of in the middle, you know. I still want to, you know, how do you do that and still keep like kind of the hometown feel and kind of the great services and everything else. But, you know, I know you need growth to keep taxes low too. So, I mean, there's a happy medium in there somewhere.
Okay.
Well, as we dig into taxes, what are your thoughts on TIF and where that's used?
So, that's kind of tough. I think.
That's very broad, certainly.
Yeah, I think, I think it can be used as a benefit and I've seen it not used very well at all. I mean, I've been personally involved in a project where the developer went broke and the people of that village, not here, you know, lost all their money. And then I believe Epic was TIF and that's worked out to a TIF. So, you know, I don't know, it's, it can work and it can't work. So, I think you really have to look closely at where you're putting that money and how you're doing that and how you're getting it back, you know, and not losing it, I guess, or it's just such a long time that it doesn't even make sense.
Okay. Do you see any objectives that the board should be looking at or something that you'd want to see the board looking at differently in the views of the, what we could be doing for the village or not doing for the village?
Not offhand, and again, I haven't been like watching your meetings or going to your meetings, so.
Okay. So, if there's something you could see in Wannakee that you thought would be, well, that would be great for the community, anything in your mind on that?
I just, I would like good bike access into town, you know, and I would say if anything, I mean, we've added trails in that bridge over on the park off of 113. I mean, I think we're making improvements and trying to do that. I think we need some land. I have had conversations on that before, but I mean, it's a struggle because you have to get the land to put the path in, you know, connect all that. But yeah, that would, that would be one thing that I would like to see.
Okay. Couple-part question. Have you participated in the Emergency Services Citizens Academy?
No.
Okay. And in relation to EMS, fire and police, if there was something to improve there, what would you look to have improved?
Well, I think the last comment that I heard from, you know, just the volunteer aspect of that was the location is far from a lot of our housing, so the response time, like if you wanted to volunteer but you lived, you know, further towards Madison, you can't get to the firehouse quick enough to respond. So, they want people, I forget where you're going with this.
More local?
Yeah, like kind of our neighborhood.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? And so, I think some of the struggles with the volunteer, I don't know if they're struggling with volunteer, it sounded like they might be a little bit, you know, and I don't know how you fix that. Would you, we just built a brand-new firehouse, do you know what I'm saying, here? Or maybe just trying to, how do you give incentive to people who live within the timeframe? Do you know what I mean, the response time, to get there quickly?
Yep. Okay.
When you're in our seats, if you were chosen, sometimes it can be difficult from social media, people taking liberties with you, putting statements in what you may have said or may not have said or taking it out of context. Do you feel you have the thick skin for that?
I think so, I don't know, I haven't been, nobody's attacked me yet on social media, so that would be a new experience, but, you know, I hope it could.
Okay. I'm just saying it because it's a fact of reality in today's world. You can say, you know, up and somebody's going to say you said down.
Right.
It's just the reality of it. And so, every statement you make in our world is important because people listen to it very carefully and so, when I say that, you just have to be prepared for that. And I just want you to understand that going into it potentially, if you're selected, that that is one of the things, it's very different than being on a committee. Committees, you don't generally have that. Well, being a board member, you do.
Okay.
The first time you get a phone call from the media is a little unique. Let's see, is there one type of business or a service or, you know, something of that nature that isn't currently in the village that you think could really be used here? Don't say another grocery store.
Well, no, I like restaurants, you know, and I think we're getting more of those too. I mean, it seems more often, yeah, just, so you stick around instead of driving into Middleton, you can go and have choices and.
Okay. So, one of the challenges that we face, I hear it constantly, you brought it up, others have as well, is restaurants and having restaurants come here. And our goal, and I think everybody in the community's goal would be for that to be a successful restaurant. And we have to look and balance growth versus what we can basically support. If we don't have the growth, we won't be able to support what's potentially going to come here. And I'm trying to gather from you, and when I talked about the, how quickly you thought the village was growing and such, those things are part of it, meaning we're going to add two grocery stores, it looks like. Okay? Are we going to be able to support those two grocery stores? Is it our decision that? They'll have figured, they're the ones that are spending the money and putting it all in.
Right.
So, it's been the board's belief that that should be really on them. Restaurants are the same thing, where they're looking at, can we support it? So, if we have a, I'm trying to get that feel from you, what your growth strategy is. We've had a strategy in place now for, well, since my term started, about 90 houses a year, because that we're growing. And we didn't see a lot of restaurant activity within that growth span, but now we've grown enough that the circles are big enough. What steps do you think we should take to either speed that up or slow that down to get more of those restaurants? And I'll give you an example. Sun Prairie sprawled out very quickly, lots of restaurants, various other things that came in. Okay? Other places, no expansion, no restaurants, nothing else.
Right.
So, where's the happy medium?
Right.
Is what I'm asking.
No.
If you have any thoughts on that and.
And I don't know that I can answer that. There is a happy medium. I'm not against growth, I'm not saying that, I'm just for like smart growth, I guess, if there was a way to do that and, you know, not just go crazy and, you know, I don't know. And I thought Dane County, again, gave guidance on that. Am I wrong? I thought they only allow you to do so many houses per year.
It's what our infrastructure, we'd have to talk about infrastructure and such, what we can support. Next question?
So, this is roughly a 21-month appointment. When that comes to an end, and I realize it's very, very early, would you see yourself potentially running for another term, vacating the seat for whoever's running, that sort of thing? And as a add-on to that, how do you feel about term limits and that sort of thing?
I'd say, yeah, possibly, you know, I'd run again. I mean, if it goes well and, you know, as I anticipated it would, but you're scaring me with this social media comment. So, yes, I would consider doing that. And what was the next question, sorry?
Second part of it was, how do you feel about term limits? There's not currently anything in place here, but.
Oh.
Is that something that we should have or should not?
I don't think so. I mean, Phil's on the board, right? And he's been on for a long time and I wouldn't see a reason to just not have, you know, I'm just thinking of people I know that are on there and, I mean, you still have to run again and get elected, right?
True. Recently, we've seen people actually running. In the past, there's been a lot of times where.
Nobody, yeah.
Yeah, it's, you know, you've got incumbent and they're just, they're just in.
So, other than I scared you with the social media comment, what do you think your biggest challenges will be becoming a trustee?
I think just getting up to speed on the issues because I haven't, I didn't really plan to do this and I haven't been, do you know what I mean, actively following all our issues? I mean, I'm on the, you know, I'm on Utility Commission and Finance Committee. I mean, I'm active in the community, I just haven't been in the detail that you guys have just by, so coming in, kind of a little late, just kind of getting up to speed on everything quickly.
Okay. Okay, good. You're good?
Mm-hmm.
Got them all? I think so. MMSD. I know that's a challenge for us and it will continue to be. Our, our general public probably is not all that much aware of MMSD, so nothing else today. I'm glad the word came out for people to hear MMSD and, and understand what water and infiltration and it going into our sewers and the charges that we're getting and incurring and increases that are going on.
Right.
It's something that we need to make sure the public's aware of. I, I think you'd agree with that.
Right, yes.
And, and your background, right now, civil engineer, what does that mean to the community? What would that mean, or what would it look like to the community if you were on the, on the board? How could you use that expertise and knowledge?
So civil engineers, you know, deal with, you know, utilities, sanitary water, stormwater, flooding, water quality, treating the water before it goes in your lakes and streams, you know, roads, paving, traffic, kind of a lot of the things, everything outside the building basically that you see a civil engineer is involved with. Just in case, I know a lot of people don't know about engineering, but that's the gist of it.
So you would say you have a solid background in that?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments that you'd like for us or anything you want us to know about you, family, anything like that? Any closing comments?
No.
This was, I'm sure, a very enjoyable experience for you, and just like everybody else that's been through here, we try to make it as easy as we can, but, uh, yeah, it's important when we go to make, when I go to make this decision that we have a good candidate for the community, and I'm just excited that we had nine people apply and, and thank you for coming in tonight. And next week, we will be making that announcement, so I invite you to be there when we do that. And the board will actually vote at that point on who we're going to select, so thank you for putting in for, for this.
Sure.
All right?
Thank you.
Thank you, you're all square. Two minutes ahead, look at that. Did you think we'd be on time? You did? Oh, I thought we were gonna get behind for sure. We're good, okay. Kristen, thanks for being here tonight, first off, and for applying for the position. The, the first three that went through, I told them all the same thing. Joe and I have basically come up with different questions for each of the candidates, and I, I kind of know what his are now, but I didn't know before the event happened tonight, and, so we're gonna go through those questions after we're done with that. I'm gonna take all the information that basically people have been stating to me. Also, there are applications, what I know from them, and then making a recommendation to the village board next week.
Sounds good.
Okay. The board ultimately decides who we choose, I just make a recommendation, okay? So we have a line of questions. Who went first last time?
I did.
You did, all right, so that means I'm up first. All right, let me get myself organized here. Okay, first off, tell me why you want to be on the village board?
I work in economic and community development. I do a lot of that work around the state with different communities through the University of Wisconsin Extension where I am employed, and it would be nice to bring those skill sets and those connections and contexts and experiences to the community I live in. So simply, simply to serve the community.
Thank you.
Says you've been a resident of Wannakee since 2009?
Yes.
Where were you before that and since coming here and wherever you were before? How do you see that benefiting the board and the community?
Yeah. For, uh, let's see, we moved here in 2009. In 1998, we moved from Atlanta, Georgia to Nina, where my husband is working.
That's quite the change.
Yes, my husband, uh, he, he worked for, we lived, had lived in Nina, in Appleton beforehand. My husband worked for Kimberly-Clark Corporation, and that's a pretty well-tried path. But we were in Atlanta for graduate school for the most part. I also worked for the American Red Cross while I was down there in their blood services division, primarily with corporate accounts, like Equifax, AT&amp;T, Georgia Electric, in the midtown Atlanta region. And getting them to donate money and blood and give us their people's time. Before that, I was in nonprofit fundraising and marketing in Appleton, school at Stevens Point, Georgia State in between there, and I grew up in Sauk City Prairie de Sac for the second half of my childhood, back when we had a great football team there and a chance at beating others. And first half of my childhood in Sheboygan, but I was pretty young when we left. So how does that benefit, uh, us here? When I was at, when we were living in Nina, I was working as a lecturer in business and economics as long, as well as communication at the University of Wisconsin, Fox Valley, and I was part of that community in a ten-year period, and not an active part of the business community there, 'cause I worked in Manasha. But when that community was transitioning from a paper-oriented town to one that had a more diverse economic base, and so was involved, you know, involved in volunteer and some downtown efforts there, but other than that, it's a great community here, and there are some lessons that I learned there, but most of my professional experience with community development comes from working at Extension the last few years.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. So with your experience and your knowledge of those other communities, why Wannakee? What brought you here and what was the attractive part of it?
Yeah, so my, my, I, I was the trailing spouse, which I always feel weird saying, but people move for different partners' careers, so my husband was leaving Kimberly-Clark and coming to work for the University of Wisconsin, and I was the trailing spouse going back to graduate school. Having grown up in the Sauk City Prairie de Sac area, I knew that we primarily were looking for, like a lot of people that live in the area, a good school district for our kids at the time. I had been a volunteer with my elementary school, Upstate Children's Elementary School up in Nina, and had worked on a lot of referenda up there for the school district. Their school district was in a position, and still is to this day, in a position where they have declining enrollment and an aging population, at the same time, they were expanding housing. I mean, some of the communities adjacent to it, and so the school formula funding where you have a lot of very expensive houses and declining enrollment is a really bad thing, so there were a lot of referenda to keep the doors open on schools. And one of my priorities when moving was, I want to move to a school district where we're doing referendums for expanding the community offerings and not necessarily keeping the doors open on the school district. So that put us in view of quite a few. Sauk was a, a good option, Madison West was a good high school to fit into Middleton. Wannakee is the town that really fit us best, though, to be honest, it's close enough to commute to Madison, it's far enough away that it's got its own identity, I really like that. I like the idea that it was, I grew up in a farming town that were, and I wouldn't say Wannakee's a farming town anymore, but it's still got its farming heritage, its agricultural heritage, and so it felt very comfortable to me.
You can still smell the money a couple times a year.
You can, you can. Smells a lot better than pulp mills, I have to say.
What are you trying to say there? Go ahead.
I'm saying exactly what I said. It's the smell of money.
It smells better in three months' time, so, yeah.
There's a whole lot of stuff that you've said in there. If you had to pick one single thing, what would you say is Wannakee's biggest strength?
Oh, there are a lot of, one is hard to narrow down to one. I think the, you know, there, there's a reason we moved here, everyone always says the school, so we'll just take that off the table because we all agree they're great. I think from my perspective in community development, comparing, and I didn't know this when we moved here. This is something I've learned along the way over the past few years, is that we have a community that really does work together. We may have differences in how we're gonna get to where we're going as a community, and you hear that around certain issues that come up from time to time in every community, we're no different that way. But everyone at least seems to have their eye on the same prize, and that's advancing the community, making it a better place to live. People are more willing in this community than some of the others I've worked with to support efforts that might require them to pay a little bit more in taxes, which is an issue in, in many communities. Those are all kind of attitudes people have, you can't replicate very easily. Something we benefit from that is not directly a result of, of what is done in the community, but more the region the community lives in, is that we're growing in population. A lot of the communities I deal with, particularly in the northern part of the state, are shedding people and having a hard time with meeting basic workforce requirements. There's nobody to hire because there's a lower population today than there was a year ago. Nobody, lower population two years from now. Those populations are often aging and experiencing influx of, of young, active retirees, people fifty-five, sixty, sixty-five-year-old who are purchasing properties primarily in late communities and at a stage in their life where the services that they're interested in supporting are different than the services that support families. So that's a lot, I mean, that's more than one thing, but, you know, the increase in population is really a net benefit to communities like Wannakee to begin with. The fact that there has been a priority for the last twenty years on building the infrastructure of the town and that there have been, I would say, very sensible approaches to paying more tax dollars or increasing tax base through, through some very well-managed growth, all assets that you don't necessarily have in other communities.
Great.
Yeah.
So you led our task force for the village.
Yeah, I facilitated it, so.
And, and I think I helped in the hiring of you at that time, but we had no knowledge of one another before that, I don't believe. And within that task force, I know those reports are gonna be coming out at our next plan commission, I believe. Can you maybe share with me what you think is our biggest challenge here in the community? That we're gonna face as a village board?
Yeah, so I'm tempted to say, because I've been working with the housing task force, top of mind is housing for me always for the community. I don't think that's a challenge in the sense that it's an unsolvable problem. There have been a lot of decisions over the years that have put Wannakee in a very good place with regards to housing. So we are, we are lucky, very lucky, in that we have some choices that, that we can make. So I would actually put housing aside from that, and I would say that that's a manageable, a manageable issue. In every community, every, every community that I and my colleagues are working with across the state are dealing with housing is an issue, and it's a different type of housing in every community. And so whereas we're talking about how do we grow best and how do we expand what is offered here in, in terms of the types of housing that people can take advantage of, other communities, they're, you know, they're looking at not even being able to bring in builders because the price that they could get for a house that is maybe desperately needed isn't the same amount of money it costs to build that house that would be a net loss. So I see this as a pure opportunity for us as a community. I'd say some of the problems are, and part of my job is always to look over the horizon at the Extension and Economic Development and see the problems that are coming down the road. We're starting to hear a lot about childcare as an issue for communities and those restrictions, the, the effect that childcare and lack of childcare infrastructure has on workforce development, particularly as the housing, or not the housing market, but the employment market is extraordinarily tight right now. Our only available employees for the most part are parents who've decided to, mom or dad who've decided to work a less-than-optimal schedule, because, often because, sometimes because, mostly because they're choosing, if they're financially lucky enough, they're choosing to stay home with the child, but sometimes because childcare is not affordable on what we would all consider a living wage. And so there are some community solutions to that. We're very lucky in Wannakee that the school system is set up the way it is, that we have adequate morning care 'cause we start early enough, we've got busing, infrastructure built in, we're really set up to facilitate working parents. But we can see this happening in a lot of other similarly well-positioned communities. So how do we talk about making land available or property available that will sub, effectively not subsidizing childcare, but where rents would be low enough that childcare will be adequate? So that's one issue that we see coming down the road. And the second issue, and it's a good issue to have right now, but it's affecting business communities everywhere, is the tight labor market. You know, knock on wood that we don't have a recession. If we do have a recession, we'll have a completely different set of new and exciting problems to deal with. Until, you know, in, in the market we're in now, getting employees at thirteen, fourteen and fifteen-dollar-an-hour jobs, which are childcare workers, CNA's, you know, entry-level machinists that are in training, the people that sustain a lot of our communities, it's gonna continue to be an issue. It's especially gonna be an issue in Dane County, even though we're getting a lot of new residents in Dane County every year, the employment market here is really competitive and wages are, are difficult to, to push up in a lot of industries. So I can see those as two big issues. The third big issue that we're seeing is deteriorating infrastructure. So our roads are, seem to be in pretty good condition here, and I say this as a layperson. I do not know a lot about road management, but infrastructure to and from town, sewer infrastructure, fiber infrastructure for broadband, which we're lucky enough that I think fiber's gonna be available pretty much to everybody in the village within the next few months. All of those are, are major issues that we, that we see coming down the road, and those are, they're hard things for communities to write checks for, right? You replace your sewer system and it's a heavy bill, but you don't get to throw a party for it, right? It's not like there's a new restaurant that opens at the end of it.
Not to self-throw a party.
Yeah, for the new sewer system. They did that embarrassingly when they opened the bypass around, which is hugely detrimental to the business community there. And I see that probably twenty-five years down the road, if Highway nineteen is eventually bypassing, which, you know, we've got a limited width for road here, eventually bypasses Wannakee. Some of the things that are going on downtown right now, where we're having people interested in living downtown, hopefully mitigate the impacts of that, but that's something twenty-five years from now, twenty years from now, whenever that happens, that might be an issue. So, yeah, they're all things that can be overcome. They're good places to look at how they've taken care of those things already. We've got some good examples to learn from and some good things to teach other communities, yeah.
So I think you've met Gary for sure.
Yes, yeah.
I don't know how much you know of the other village board members. Do you see yourself, how do you see yourself acclimating into the board and getting yourself up to speed?
Yeah.
What do you think's gonna be important for you?
Um, I, I acclimate pretty well, I work with boards all the time, you know, through my, through my job in particular, so the type of work that any village board does or any economic development organization does, it's the type of work that I, I do all day on my job. So I don't think I'll have any sort of issue with that. I know what's been going on in the village for the last, you know, two, three, four years, I've been paying pretty close attention. I think there are some historical precedents and decisions that were made twenty-five, thirty years ago that always in any community are good to look back on when issues become relevant, when we're wondering why, you know, Century Boulevard was developed the way it is, you know, going back and looking at those historical records. Those are all easy things to do, so I don't think there'll be any issues.
Okay.
I hope not, yeah.
Okay.
You just talk about so much stuff, I'm just like checking things off left and right. What's your view on TIF and where that is used or not used?
Um, I don't, I'm agnostic about it. It can be used well, it can be used badly. Princeton, Wisconsin is a great example, wonderful community, they had a TIF that failed about, it, it, they enacted it, trying to remember when they enacted it, but it, it was a sufficient, a close enough number of years to the onset of the recession that they didn't, they enacted it and really didn't have time to benefit from it, and then it failed during the Great Recession. It was, it was done to write a business park, and it is now, ten years later, we were there for a project at Extension with a community vitality and placemaking team two years ago, and they're still gun-shy of any sort of, and you just mentioned TIF and you can see people breaking out a cold sweat. So, so it can be really harmful to a community if it's not done well and people will have a long memory of that. If it's used responsibly, then it's a great tool, but the key is to make sure that when it's used, it's used responsibly. But other than that, the reason that a TIF is enacted, the, the, you know, the restrictions that are set on that TIF, the agreements to how it's gonna be managed between the developers and the village, all of that need to check out in order for it to be okay, but I don't have, I'm not strong when I weigh the other.
Okay.
So one of my questions is, is with the day of social media and everything in our society, being in our positions, people can take their shots, some always accurate, some, some not always accurate, some accurate, some not so accurate, some partial, all those kinds of things. Do you think you'll have any problems dealing with that?
Yeah. I am, I'm on, I'm on Facebook mostly for personal reasons, I don't post a lot. In my position with university, not that I'm a terribly public person, but I do come into communities. Part of my job is oftentimes to kick over a rock and say, hey, let's look at what's under here, say hard things and leave, so that the, the folks at the local level can, you know, that need things to be said but can't say them themselves, have somebody that, that does that. As a result of that, if you look at my Twitter feed and whatnot, it's pretty, you know, here's a picture of me going into a meeting and whatnot, I don't tend to get involved with that. My, I, I went to, I've got a graduate degree in strategic communication, and that, focus of that was social media, or one of the focuses of that was social media and how information is picked up online and how that sort of information impacts people's feelings, sentiments, their opinions related to an issue, so I'm really hyper-aware of it, but yeah, I, I don't like the, yeah. These are pictures of my dog. Try not to get involved in anything on social media.
Okay.
What kind of dog do you have?
Oh, I have a Yorkie.
That's, that's not the actual question.
Yeah, I have a Yorkie, he actually, he thinks he runs the neighborhood that I live in.
Most of them do.
Yeah, they do, super territorial, didn't you not know that ahead of time?
Is there one business or service? Is there one business or service or something of that nature that isn't currently in the village that you'd like to attract here and why?
I, we could probably, with our growing population, use more of everything, to be honest. And again, that's a good position to be in for a community. I think that, you know, what I would use personally and what other people would use personally, we have our own favorites, right? We're talking about what would be right to try to attract to the community. There are a couple of different ways of approaching that. One is a really strong market analysis where we look at, you know, the typical, like what the typical household spends on. Name anything, groceries, hair care, restaurant, car repairs. And then multiply that by the number of households and the number of people in each category, and then by the number of business establishments in the category. We did an analysis, Bill Ryan, who I work with and is one of the Downtown and Business District Development Experts at Extension, did this for Sauk. We've recently done one for Kiwanee, City of Kiwanee, Ellsworth, Village of Ellsworth, and whatnot. And the difference between what a community spends on that based on their population and what you have offering is your retail leakage. And that would tell you kind of what you could use in town. As your opportunity as a community. And so rather than, you know, me saying, you know, I would use X, I would say, what would we use and what would be successful here? So, yeah.
I appreciate the view.
Yeah, thank you.
If you have another one, ready, go ahead. I have one.
Well, the same one I've sent to everybody else. Have you participated in the Emergency Services Citizens Academy here?
I have not.
Okay. You should.
You should.
Is there anything as far as EMS, fire, police that you could see as an improvement that we should be looking at?
Yeah. I, not, that is not my area of expertise at all. Not like even remotely. So before, so what I'm about to say is not an educated or an informed position. I see many communities going to regional ambulance systems right now. Door County is one that just recently did that. Geographically, it makes sense in some places. I don't know if it would make sense geographically here. In some communities that are harder to get to or where service is limited to begin with, that's a bad choice. Just because the response time for ambulances can be horrendous. That is, that is the sole thing I know about EMS. And that's such a generic thing to say. I am not your candidate, if that's what you mean.
No, that's a good thing.
But I'm willing to admit that I would, I would be happy to learn. So.
Fantastic.
What things do you think you need to learn?
Oh, I would say EMS. Yeah, top of mind, right? Obviously EMS. I am, so I'm not an engineer. So in knowing that a lot of infrastructure issues are strong issues that communities face, I would defer to experts on all of that matter. I feel very comfortable with economic development, with community development, with public opinion around issues that may be controversial. Beyond that, I'd say the issues that I would need to learn about are the ones that are coming. And I'm sure you guys have had this experience that, you know, you get to a board meeting and you think something's not gonna be an issue, and it's an issue. So the surprise issues that nobody sees, those are, you know, whatever the issue is. I do tend to dig into data a lot and want to know about something. So I tend to do a lot of background reading. But, yeah, because I'm sure there's a lot that I need to know. I know nothing about policing and fire service. So I'm glad I can pick up the phone and call. That's a pretty big part of the job. But, yeah, I would defer to the experts on that.
Okay.
So this is roughly a 21-month appointment. At the end of this, do you foresee yourself potentially running for another term? Are you thinking it's 21 months and out or?
I would say it would depend on if I've been useful or not.
Okay.
Entirely. Oh, you know, probably, yes.
You're not tied desperately into one or the other?
No. If I have been useful and it has been a benefit, not for me personally, but for the community, for me to have sat in a seat and do this, then yes, I would. But if it's at the end of 20 months, it's clear that, like, I've not contributed much, I would say let someone else take this role.
And as sort of a follow-up to that, we don't currently have any term limits on the village board. But how do you feel about term limits and is that something we should be looking at?
Never thought of it for a village board, yeah.
Fair enough.
And the answer, and my answer would be, and I can understand why some people might want term limits. And my caution, my strong caution would be that every community kind of goes through this up and down. And usually, we're enacting term limits as we're going up in population and interest. And as a community matures and its population stabilizes, there are fewer and fewer people in some cases. This might not, we might have enough people living in Wannakee that this is never an issue. But with fewer and fewer people that want to fill those roles. So you have just a lack of people wanting to run for positions. And a forced turnover can be very detrimental. The other thing is that oftentimes, some of our, since, you know, board positions are volunteer positions, some of your most experienced people are people who've sat on the board for the last 30 years and know the history of the community. And that, it can be a real loss when those people in the community.
Indeed.
Yeah. Are gone. I rely on those folks a lot in my job when I swing into a town.
Okay. Any others for you?
I think I'm good.
Good?
Yeah.
I'll just have one remaining question on this one. Do you believe yourself being a bring-things-together-type person? Or I want it this way, I'd like to have this established and be done? And I'm getting at, how well do you work with others?
Yeah, sometimes we all want things to be done. I'll say that for sure. We worked on a project for a long time. I am, and it's by virtue of what I do for a living, I'm agnostic on most issues. So I am strictly, let's look at the data and see what data says about whatever issue it is that we're dealing with. Nine times out of the 10, whatever data you're looking at are gonna point you in a really concrete direction. This is a better path. This is not a better path. That one out of 10 times that it doesn't, I think it's really important to talk to people in the community about what they may want if there's a really ambiguous answer. And then do some really strong what-if, worst-case scenario, let's play devil's advocate, you know, play out whatever the situation is. And make a decision from that. Protecting yourself against the loss as a community is, I think, a strong need. We're looking at difficult and ambiguous situations. Not all issues, and when you're facing a difficult or an ambiguous situation, need to be solved that particular moment. Sometimes it's useful to just wait things out as a community and see if the situation changes. I'm trying to, where have I worked recently that's been, that's been an issue? Couple of different communities have faced really strong controversial issues in the past few years. And the drive is, there's a community in particular, and I won't name it, that I'm working with on a communication plan around a shots-fired map that's going to come out. This is not an issue we have here. This is, this is, they're at the tail end of a three-year-long project studying, and this is nowhere in our particular region of the state. At the tail end of a three-year-long series of studying where, when, and how crime is occurring and shots are fired and being reported in their particular community. And they are having a lot of discussions about how do we roll out that data? Because that data's gonna be hurtful to certain neighborhoods where this is happening. It's gonna paint them in a light that's not true for them. And they are talking with community members. One of the options that I'm advocating for is I know that it's the end of the time period. It's a hugely important project. It's going to cause some real stress and strife in the community. So we could, this is a controversial thing to suggest to people who've been working on a project for three years, we could enact the solutions to this and come back a year from now and report on the data that you've gathered, how we're addressing it, and where the progress has been made for the issue, really controversial issue, and just wait and back off a little bit on it. Now, we hopefully will, you know, we'd never have this issue and wanna keep it. When something is that hot, it's okay to not act. And it's okay to step back and take a real wait-and-see approach to how should this be solved? Now, I don't know that we've had, I can't think of an issue we've had that much controversy here or potential controversy. But that's a real, you know, things will be solved. They'll work out in time. We'll be patient.
All right, you were done?
Yeah.
I actually have one question, and I feel bad. I'm gonna email the other candidates this because I think it was an important question that I just, I missed. That's what I was looking through my papers for. I'm assuming when you chose to apply for this, that you probably had a discussion with your spouse about doing this. What was their response? What was his response?
I told him afterwards. I did, yeah. Yeah, so a friend of ours has been joking with me for a while that I should be doing this. And so we had been, and I, you know, I did this sort of thing for a living. And I used to be on boards before my job ramped up and do things like that. And he's known it's coming down the road that I'm gonna apply for some more involvement positions. He's supportive.
Okay.
Yeah. Yep. He gives me a hard time, so.
I know, because they're right, right in it with you in a lot of cases. So as you come through both good and bad things that you're dealing with and hard decisions, so. But I will do that, I don't know if it's, I have to make sure it's okay for me to copy you on that email to them, but I'll find out for sure. And either way, I'll make sure that I get that question out to them because I'd like to hear that from all of them.
Yeah. Yeah, he's totally supportive.
That's everything for tonight. Thank you for coming in. Like I said, we'll be making that decision next week. And if, I invite you to be at the board meeting. That's when we'll kind of announce what's happening. The board will make their decision if they're gonna vote for whoever I recommend. And they'll be seated at the next board meeting after that.
Excellent. All right.
All right?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin. And so I will close the meeting. I'll make the motion to close this.
You mean to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Hold on, I'll second.
Okay.[1787.74]